A raise.
Really?
I see it.
You don't deserve a raise.
I don't remember doing that.
All right, welcome everybody to City Council meeting for Monday, February the 10th. Remind everybody to please turn your, all your electronic devices off as they do interfere not only with the recording equipment but also with people with hearing aids and our hearing devices. So, if we could have a roll call, Madam Clerk to establish quorum.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Terry McLung?
I'm here.
Vicki Schneider?
Here.
Harry Meyer?
Here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
We have six.
All right. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Come on.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd like to just add Parks to the agenda.
We can't, I'm not supposed to do that. Well, I'll, I'll, the, the meeting, I'll second that then.
I thought we weren't supposed to do last minute adding, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we always have that option. It's up to the council whether or not you want to add it.
I believe the procedure that we adopted was to have a motion, a second, and a vote.
Yep.
I thought we were supposed to keep it for emergencies.
Well, we have that option, so, uh, we got a motion to add Parks to the agenda, I hear, and we got a second.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Aren't we supposed to be having, setting up a workshop on Parks anyway?
And that's what, what we need to do is design, design our workshop.
I think that if, Bob, would you like to elaborate a little bit on the agenda on that Parks, designing, setting up a workshop agenda?
Yeah, we have, you know, it's, we have to decide how we want it to be held, how we want it to operate, you know, or, you just said workshop, you're gonna come over here and open the doors and have a workshop. We need to talk about how it's gonna work.
I see.
Format?
All right, anybody else?
X word.
All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, anything else? All right, all those in favor of the minutes, I mean, of the agenda as amended, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Uh, get a motion to approve the minutes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. First of all, we've got a public hearing. Can I get a motion to open up a public hearing for the request to vacate the alley?
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we have a motion, or we got a public hearing to vacate the alley east of Angle Street. Is anybody here wishing to speak on that?
Terry.
Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion made to close the public hearing, not having anybody speak. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, uh, get a motion to approve the minutes for January 27th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, of the minutes as submitted, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we got a Planning Commission application from Mark Hicks for position three. Make it his, uh, applications in your folder there.
This is a new application, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we can go ahead and hear Mr. Hicks at the next meeting, uh, if that's okay with everybody. Uh, also, on Parks, we have an application from Cameron Denauer. Uh, Ms. Schneider?
I make a motion, I make a motion, well, I renominate Cameron to the Parks Commission.
Is there a second?
No.
No second to that. Okay, discussion?
Uh, it's, it's not a renomination though, is it?
Well, he's been on before and I nominated him then, so.
He has been on the Parks before, uh, and sir, and he had to get off Parks because of health issues. He's, he's put his application back in again because his health's better, uh, and so, we've got a motion and a second to approve Cameron for Parks. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Okay, is it five, one?
Yes.
Um, we got an HDC position that will expire March the 7th. Uh, I'm not sure who that is. Uh, but anyway, uh, brings us to public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes, please.
Ferguson Stewart, Seven Harvey Road. Um, what I wanted to say was, again, uh, when, when, when the mayor said how great we've done and we're doing, I wanted to reiterate, basically, we are doing great. Uh, this town, we've saved millions of gallons, a million gallons with the leaks program being stopped. We've got new business startups, we've got new owners in town. Uh, Mr. Hicks is a great example of a new owner coming in and want to get involved with the city. Uh, we've got active community, and I just want to say, you're doing a good job, council, keep it up. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Stewart. That was real nice of you.
This comment is titled, "Let's Just Do the Right Thing." If the City of Eureka Springs and Parks and Recreation Commission is going to work with the Walton Family Foundation through a partnership with the NWA Trailblazers to bring new prosperous mountain biking to our town to improve our wonderful Lake Leatherwood City Park, the passion play marble flats, and our existing proposed and proposed in-town trails, then we must properly accommodate this opportunity. In 2017, we approved a vote authorizing Parks to continue using a 1/8% sales tax and approve the park in accordance with their master plan. We supported that vote because we understood the intent of that plan was to create a great outdoor experience upon the 1,700-acre gem of our public green space so that this natural resource would be carefully protected and certain uses would be properly enhanced. But suddenly, just a few months later, Parks quickly approved a cooperative construction agreement with Trailblazers to build an extensive set of new downhill trails and facilities on their newly acquired property that would flow into the Miners Rock area of the park. This new agreement advanced a complicated development involving the use of private land and parkland with private funds and Parks matching funds to enable construction to quickly commence. Then in summer of 2018, the city approved a resolution to accept a donation of a portion of the adjoining Walton property. Somehow, though, in all this progress, beginning over two years ago, the Planning Commission has yet to create an ordinance to annex this donated land into the city's municipal limits, and the City Council has yet to create an ordinance to place this donated and annexed property into the defined public spaces under Parks authority. In my opinion, this is very problematic. I'm not sure if Parks is authorized to improve property that has not been annexed within the city limits and which is not within their specific charge as defined by the municipal code. In my opinion, neither the master plan or the trails' master plan provide appropriate terms of consideration for how a downhill trail project in partnership with the Trailblazers might truly reflect the purpose and goals of these plans. I think we need to undertake a comprehensive review of every aspect of the scope of this project as it must conform to our municipal code, and carefully consider how we might work to accommodate this consequential new facility within our community's treasured park, and continue to improve not only our city's trails but all of our parks and recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is John Rankin, and I'm one of the new co-owners of Brew's, and I just wanted to clear up some, I think, some misinformation that's been espoused here. I'm sorry we're a little late getting on, on the game here when it comes to the entertainment district, but I just wanted to say that, um, when Mr. Myers approached me first, um, I, like so many bar owners in town, had a lot of concerns and still do have a lot of concerns about is how this is all gonna work. But I also, um, told, uh, Harry that, um, we would be for it. Um, we certainly would give it a try. We didn't want to just poo-poo the whole idea, but we wanted to address some of the concerns as, as bar owners. And so, I've talked with many of the other bar owners, and, um, a lot of us agree on some of the same issues. Um, quickly, I know I don't have much time, um, but extra staff involving, um, our thing. We have three, we have three, uh, entrances and exits, one outside on a patio, um, you know, do we, you know, for people, do we have to have staff manning the doors right now, which would be an extra cost for us? Um, people sneaking drinks in or even just hopping our little fence, even if we decided to lock it? Um, the liability to Brew's, um, is an issue, drunken behavior, um, you know, people coming in that are in a, in a group and someone buying drinks for everybody, and we're not really aware of what they've been doing before, and all of a sudden, there's an accident outside the thing, and are we liable and things like that? Um, I guess trash, all this extra plastic, um, you know, uh, I just worry, you know, as a, as an environmental city, you know, it, it concerns me, this extra plastic that's going on. Um, also, um, I guess just maybe the cost to taxpayers, extra police force that are, is gonna come out of the taxpayers' money, we'll definitely need, I think, extra police when this is all happening, if this goes through as planned. And I guess it's also just, um, you know, what, what prevents people from filling up their cups, you know, from their flasks and going into establishments, and, um, you know, I can see a lot of that going on, um, you know, um, you know, um, obviously, that would be bad for business if that was happening. Um, you know, as a gallery owner as well, you know, um, the gallery stalls have always worked well for us. Um, we've never really had a problem with people taking drinks out or going, oh, I want to take my drink out to the next gallery, and it's like you just point them to the, to the next gallery and say, yeah, get a glass of wine there, you know, it's not a, it's not a major deal. Um, and I think it might be confusing for a lot of people, you know, in town. Um, I guess that's my time. Um, I just want to say that we would be, we want to be part of it if this goes through. Um, it's an experiment, and we're gonna try and, uh, see how it all goes. It's up to the City Council to enforce it, I guess, or to make the rule and set, we can all abide by. Thank you.
I don't know how to stop it. I never have. [laughing] Hello again, I'm Pat Costner, and I want to be as short as possible. At your last meeting, I made the claim that some $30,000 to $40,000 of 1/8% tax money was not accounted for in the Parks' general ledgers for the last three years. You'll be relieved to know, if you don't already, that the missing, missing money has been accounted for. The 2017 ledger shows Parks received no deposits of 1/8% tax funds in September, October, and November. And Mr. Clark, the chief financial officer, his records show the state didn't send any 1/8% tax funds in those months. So, that raises a question. Why didn't the state send the tax funds for those three months? In a recent email, Parks Director Justin Huss explained, "In 2017, the 1/8% tax lapsed for three months due to the processing time following the sunset of the previous tax." So, let's think about that. The Parks Commission was aware that the 1/8% tax levied in 2013 would sunset in 2017. The Commission was also aware that there would be significant processing time between the referendum approving the tax and the dispersal of the tax to Parks. If the Commission had set the tax renewal in motion earlier, there would have been no three-month gap in Parks receiving the tax, and Parks' income for the tax would have been 30% greater in 2017. As for the other missing $10,000 or so in 1/8% tax money, that occurred in 2019 when Parks recorded only 11 of the expected 12 monthly dispersals. As Mr. Clark explains, "When reimbursements are not made, sales tax is not transferred until reimbursements are settled, usually in the following month. Reimboursements are for payroll and other related expenses." So, while that $10,000 or so is missing from Parks' 2019 budget, it may well appear in the budget for 2020, and that speaks to the fact that Parks really needs a good bookkeeper as soon as possible. Uh, I had written before this a background which kind of explained how, what I, my civics lesson from this. Normally, the state treasurer collects the city's sales and use taxes during one month, and that, whoops, I wouldn't have time for it, but I have it written here. That was, that was what I suspected.
Thank you. Thanks.
Damon Hinke here with, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Mardi Gras, you name it, we're gonna talk about it. Uh, I just have some announcements. I want to tell you, it's a busy weekend, this weekend, we do have Coronation Ball tickets left, there's 20 of them. The Coronation Ball will be at the End of the Ozarks, Best Western End of the Ozarks at, uh, uh, 6:00 PM on Friday, and then obviously segue into the Chocolate Festival on Saturday, 10 o'clock at the Community Center. Uh, send your guests and friends down to have some chocolate at the Community Center on Saturday. 6:00 PM is the Night Parade for Mardi Gras downtown, so be sure and check that out, and then we have Blacklight Ball at Chelsea's. So, if you're an outside visitor coming to town, you should have plenty to do this weekend, and most places are booked to the brim, so, uh, certainly spread the word, and I do want to mention, uh, Coronation Ball does have some tickets, that's this Friday. Uh, Joker's Ball and Day Parade are the 21st and 22nd. So, a whole lot of Mardi Gras coming up. Thanks for your support, and just wanted to make you aware.
All right, that concludes the public comments. That brings us up to our unfinished business ordinance number 2292, the creation of entertainment district with third reading. Martin to discuss?
Second.
Mr. Harris? Um, I'd like to apologize to John and the folks at Brew's, I misstated last time. Uh, I've got his conversation with me mixed up with someone else's, and no. In the end, we did have several discussions, and in the end, he said, I guess we'll try it, so, that's right. Um, and this whole thing has been very controversial. Many citizens have called me and talked to me about it, and, you know, have lots of apprehension. There really doesn't seem to be a lot of reason for doing this. There is no evidence for it, they say, well, we don't, you gotta try it before you know, but we've got a CAPC that can do the research, that can poll the, the tourists that are gonna come to this town to find out if they want to come here to carry a drink around town. Um, that's, that's a pretty easy thing to, to at least get a little bit of input on, so, um, and the fear-mongering, it was all fear to begin with on the proponent's side because it was, oh, we're afraid that Rogers will do it first or someplace else will do it first, and, uh, I don't think Eureka has to fear any other little community in our area over drinking on the street. That's all I gotta say.
I would move to suspend the rules and read the ordinance by title only on its third reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Schneider?
Has, um, do you have a list of expenses, Mr. Mayor?
Beg your pardon?
Did you ever write down a list of expenses or what it was that the department had said?
You said that.
We expanded it last time.
You said if there'd be any extra expenses, and I said there was no extra expense.
That was when it was gonna be ended June 30th, and I was going to September 30th.
I still have not heard from the department heads there'd be any extra expense.
Did you let them know how much it got expanded?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you let them know how much it was expanded from three months to six months?
Yes.
Okay, so are they gonna get back to you tomorrow?
As far as I know, I will ask them again. I'll ask Public Works and the Police tomorrow, but as far as I'm, as far as I know, and from what they've said, there's no extra expense, they still have the same people on duty. They still have it.
I'd really like to actually have them here to explain to us how they can have this amount of stuff going on and there not being any extra expense in any way, size, shape, or form.
They sat in on the committees, and that was their opinion at the committee reports too.
Well, yeah, but the times have changed a whole lot since the committee talks, but I'd like to have them in front of us and be able to answer us because it just, it doesn't make sense, it's not logical.
Ms. Schneider, if you want that, then the only way that you can do that, right now there's motion on the table to approve this ordinance by title only.
It's read it, not approve it.
Same thing.
The motion is second.
To read it.
To read it.
Yeah, not to.
There's nothing to do.
I'm sorry, to read it.
You know damn well that they're gonna go ahead and approve it, that's not the point.
But you're off, you're off.
I'm gonna ask again, like I asked last time, what is everybody afraid of in regards to being honest, open, and forward with the public in expenses and times and everything else? Why is no one willing to talk to the public and be honest about it? Why? What are y'all afraid of? What are you hiding?
Anybody else? I got a motion and a second to, uh, read, read the ordinance number 22 by title only.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Nope.
42. Ordinance number 2292, an ordinance to authorize the creation of a permanent entertainment district with sunset clause.
Get a motion to approve ordinance number 2292, 2292 on its third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Get a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, the question was raised today with regards to the start date for this. Uh, if you look at 30 days from today, which is when it would go into effect, that's actually just before or in the middle of, I think, St. Patrick's Day celebration, and, uh, we were wondering if we could have a start date, maybe should have a start date after, after that particular week. Do you know how long it's gonna take the city to get ready, I guess?
If 30 days, we'll have that taken care of within 30 days. I mean, we're, we're providing the maps and, and signage.
Right, uh-huh, okay. And then, so, could we say, could I make a motion then to have a start date of, uh, March 18th? Correct.
Uh.
Which would be after.
You want?
Huh?
So, we're gonna.
You could hold off on signing it.
Well, it can go into effect, you just don't have to start that day, you can wait until three days later, four days later.
Well, the ordinance will go into effect in 30 days.
Correct.
Right.
In the middle of St. Patrick's Day week. Do you want to start that?
I mean, otherwise, we're gonna have to, to make amendment to the ordinance.
Yeah.
You want one, Mr. Weaver?
Yes, we would.
Yeah. Mr. McLung?
Uh, I think that, uh, I think, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, with what, the way it is, and the reason, my reason for that is, is that if, if the, if the establishments, like John and the others, uh, are concerned about starting on, on that holiday weekend like that, they don't have to, they don't have to sell. Just because we have the ordinance enacted doesn't mean they have to participate, so...
I, I think that's, that's an error, Terry, because anybody that doesn't participate has to notify ABC that they're not participating, so, that would be, you know, notifying them that we're not gonna participate for three or four days.
I wasn't aware of that, of that fact.
Yeah. Well, I, I understand it goes into effect.
But even still, they can, they can, they can, they can let them know after the fact, I mean, they don't have to let them know that day, or they can, they can opt in and out anytime they want, can they not? I don't know that. Can you answer that one as well?
Well, I don't think you could say, uh, I opted in and out last October, you know, you have to supposedly do it, you know, before you're, before you're going to do it and where you're gonna take action.
Mr. Weaver, you have any thoughts on that? Do you know?
Well, I don't think that, that, just because they say they're going to participate during this 30-day time period, that's, we're waiting for the ordinance to go into effect, uh, means that they have to start exactly on the 30th day. They can let the ABC know we're going to participate, but we may not be ready for five extra days or three extra days or whatever, if they're worried about opening. I would suspect that some of the businesses probably would want to open because it is St. Patrick's Day week, and the amount of consumption is usually high during that time period in most areas, so they would want to participate. But I don't think the ABC, as far as I am aware of any rules, would have a problem with them saying, we've, we're going to participate, the city's approved this, it goes into effect on next day, but we may not be ready to open our doors for an extra three days or five days while we set up our own internal procedures. I also.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's really necessary to give it a start date other than the city's start date.
We do have a bar owner here, would you want to make a comment, Mr. Rankin?
Um, yeah, as a bar owner, I was just wondering, are we gonna be provided the rules and regulations that you all set here? Like, um, this is the first time, um, I've, I'm hearing that we have to report to ABC, so, um, we will have a full list of, of do's and don'ts of everything that's clearly written out by all of you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
I think you only have to report to ABC if you are not going to participate. I would agree with, with the city attorney that if you say, we're participating and we're gonna start next Thursday, you're participating, you don't have to notify ABC of your three or four day delay.
All right, so, anyway, we've, we've still got a motion to approve the ordinance 2292, 2292 as, as amended with the first time. Ms. Schneider?
Has anybody determined yet who is getting or utilizing or paying for or selling the wristbands and/or cups?
Those are all by, by the owners, if I'm not mistaken, and that in, that's in the original ordinance, I believe.
Who picks up the bill is not in it. There are no cups.
Okay, that's just wristbands, yeah.
But it hasn't been determined who's, who's buying them or from where or?
That's not, we're not selling the wristbands, that's up to the owner.
Doesn't it say it has to be approved by you?
They gotta submit to us, but we don't. All right. Got a motion and a second.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
4-2.
All right. So maybe, uh, brings us up to our next order of business is Caribou Water Rate, Water District Rate Increase. I, at the last council meeting, Mr. McClung asked about getting a proposal on what would happen if we did just pass through the 20 cents per thousand gallons and/or what would happen if we did the 30 cents, raise 30 cents. In your packet, there is a analysis of the Caribou increase showing those rates, rate If we did the 20 cent per thousand, the increase, bill increase for the minimum 2,000 gallons would be 40 cents. If we did 30 cents per thousand gallons with a minimum usage, the rate increase would be 60 cents. For the next 6,000 gallons, it varies from 20 cents to $1.20 at 20 cents per thousand or 30 cents to $1.80 with a 30 cents per thousand. And over the 8,000 gallons, the charge would be 5.74 per thousand and the increase, I'm sure is that right? 20 cents? Mr. Clark, is that right? 20 cents per thousand and 30 cents per thousand? Yeah, okay. The increase by Caribou is 13 percent. The cost to the city, if we do nothing, is approximately $45,000 to $50,000 a year. So what is the council's feelings? Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking that perhaps we need to restructure the water bills and have like a service charge to begin with so that if you didn't run any water at all, you have, many cities have a regular service charge and then-
Mr. Meyer, that's a completely different issue.
Is on top of it.
Because- What we're dealing with right now is dealing with this ordinance. Now, what you're saying, I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's a separate issue.
Okay.
Mr. McClung?
Well, I mean, not, and not to take away from it, but, but we do have, if you, if you don't use any water and you're, and you're connected to the water service, you still got to pay a minimum, like it or not.
Sure.
But we have a service fee.
Sort of. All right. Anyone else? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so basically, what it comes down to is no matter what level you're at in usage, we're talking at the most an extra like six bucks a month as opposed to the city coming up with 45,000 to 50,000, right? Right?
Well, no, not that much. I mean, it, the minimum of 2,000 gallons is an extra 40 cents-
Right.
-per thousand. So it'd be 80 cents on your water bill. If it did 30 cents, then it would be-
Oh. Yeah. Well, you've got 5.74 per thousand for 8,000 gallons.
That's over 8,000 gallons.
Over. Oh, okay. That didn't sink in.
Your minimum is, your minimum is up at the top.
Okay, so the point is, it can cost each of us a little bit or it can cost the city a lot, right?
Correct.
Okay. So do we have to vote on and decide which we're going to do, 20, 30, or at all?
Well, the more, the more we put this off, the more that we have to pay. We're not, we're being charged, we're being charged on this by Caribou.
Right. So right now, we're going to sit here and we're going to say, okay, we're going to go for the 20 cents a month, vote it in, or 30 cents or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
As of January 1st, they started charging us from $1.55 per thousand gallon, so to $1.75. So we pay, we're already paying this in January.
Okay. So yes, we do need to do it tonight.
Ms. McClung?
Have you calculated, just for an example, you've got down there for the, for a 10,000-gallon user, that's $2 at 20 percent, 20 cents and $3 at 30 cents. What does that generate annually based on current usage?
Hey, Mr. Clark?
I see you're going to have to come up to the-
Based on a 10,000-gallon user at $2 and $3 respectively, how much does, and the cost is going to be 45,000 to 50,000? Is that, is that going to generate, if it's 20 cents, is that going to generate additional $50,000 a year revenue? 50 to 60, I guess, or 75, I guess it would be? Based on 20 cents or 30 cents?
I quite honestly didn't calculate what it would, what the-
Well, I'm just guessing, I'm just guessing that if it's 20 cents and we raise it, and we raise it 30 cents, which is 10 cents over, and it's going to cost us 50, then it generates 75,000 because it's 10 cents more. That's half of what, I mean, that's pretty simple math. So, I mean, that's, that's $25,000 additional revenue to the city over and above the cost. And it's, you know, it's, it's a $3 increase instead of a $2 for a 10,000-gallon user. Does that, does that sound cost prohibitive? It doesn't to me, but-
No, I don't, I don't believe it does, quite honestly. That's the reason I calculated it like I did. The estimated additional cost is based on what we purchase, average of what we purchase annually from Caribou. So we bill for a lesser amount, obviously, than we purchased because we have some loss still.
Did you have a question?
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, did you have a comment?
Lonny, in preparing the ordinance today, we talked a little bit about rates. And did you agree with me that the 20 cents that they're passing on to us is on the head gate? And if we put 20 cents on the end gate, the outgo, we'll still lose money, right?
We will still lose money.
We will still lose money. We'll, we'll lose about, I think you told me that, that our water loss is somewhere close to 30 percent right now?
Right.
So we'll lose about 30 percent of the revenue-
That's correct.
-if you simply use 20 as your, as your go fee.
That's right.
Or maybe a little more, a little less. If we get some more leak stopped, hopefully less.
Which, that's in the, in the plans, but that's a difference.
Our water systems, though, I think they've said here many times, leak, correct?
According to my research, all water systems lose 20 to 25 percent.
Okay.
Ms. Harmon?
Are we done with discussion? I'd like to make a motion that we only-
We are now.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we only increase what we feel we need. I, we, we asked for 20, so that's what I'm-
They're passing, they're-
Right.
-charging us 20 cents extra.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I vote that we, we-
That's your motion, is to make it 20 cents per thousand?
Yes, to the minimum of what has been passed to us. I don't feel like we should-
All right. There's a motion here to, to pass this directly on using the 20 cents per thousand gallons.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Of course, if we go 30 cents instead, that'll cover our butts for incidents that happen and maybe the next time they raise it, we wouldn't have to do anything. It's called looking ahead.
Somebody want to make an amendment to that?
No, it's not an amendment. Just-
All right. Any other? Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I believe that, especially in light of what, what our city attorney and Lonny have just referred to in the, in the loss, I'd like amended to 30 cents per thousand.
I'll second his 30.
Well, we've got a, yeah, we got a, a motion already, a motion on there for 20 cents.
Yeah, I want to amend it to 30 cents.
And you want to amend it to 30.
And I'm seconding his amendment.
All right. Discussion. Mr. Meyer?
We're squeezing it close. Look, we're starting guys at the water sewer department at 10 bucks an hour. That's minimum wage. We need to start working on getting the fees up and the money rolling in and-
That's another subject.
Correct. So the 30 cents is justifiable.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? I had all those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, 5-1. All right. Get a motion to sign this a number and include the 30 cents for the rates.
I believe that's what Susan did.
What's the next possible building?
Oh, and the next rate shall be reflected. Mr. Clark, what would be the next billing? Be March? Okay, in the March 2,000 billing.
Thank you.
And makes 30 cents per thousand. All right. Get a motion to sign this a number and read it for-
I make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number and read it for passage at 30 cents an hour. I mean, a gallon per thousand. Per thousand gallons.
All right. You got a motion, get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Meyer, second it. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so move.
Ordinance number 2293, an ordinance increasing rates for services rendered by the water system of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and providing an emergency clause. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the city owns and operates a water distribution system, whereas the city council has determined that rates and fees need to be increased for services of the system in order that there will be sufficient funds available to operate and maintain the system. And whereas it is necessary to amend the Eureka Springs Municipal Code in order to increase the rate for fees for water usage. And whereas said increased rates and fees are hereby found to be fair, reasonable, and necessary, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, the city council hereby finds and declares the additional rates that shall be added to the rates and charges for water usage are fair, reasonable, and necessary. The increase is hereby fixed at an additional 30 cents per 1,000 gallons of water consumption per month in addition to the current already charged for the services of the water system. Section 2, that the provisions of this ordinance are separable, and if a section phrase or provision shall be declared invalid, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section 3, that ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. And section 4, these rates shall be reflected in the March 2020 billing.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2293 on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
5-1. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2293 by title only.
Second.
Get a motion and second, read by title only. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
No.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
5-1. Ordinance number 2293, an ordinance increasing rates for services rendered by the water system of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and providing an emergency clause.
Mr. McClun?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2293 on its second reading.
Second.
Get a discussion?
What's it?
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, 5-1. All right, is that it? Okay.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules, read ordinance number 2293 in its third reading and invoke the emergency clause.
It becomes a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Saying so is the city's-
I got a motion and a second, or a motion to read 20, ordinance 2293.
Second.
And got a second. Discussion. Mr. McClun?
Mr. Meyer, I don't think that we will drown in the expense of two additional weeks of, of water expense. I would like to let the residents know that this is coming, and if they want a chance to speak up, they can do that in the meeting in two weeks.
I'll draw my second.
Lonny, will it make a difference waiting two weeks?
We can, we can change the rates before we finish with that.
So the two-week delay won't matter? That's what I'm asking.
Can we do it two weeks?
Can we wait two weeks to do the third? Okay. Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right. Bring this up the next time for the third reading and emergency clause. That brings us to new business, discussion of improving wages for employees from the budget. Ms. Snyder, Ms. Green.
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
She's got her-
Ms. Green?
What would be the protocol to doing something like this? Because it seems it's for public works. Would it be that we discuss it with the director of public works? Would it be something that we do?
I think it would be wise for us to know what it's going to cost and how much what we're looking at. The director of public works gives us a budget, which we approved last month, and taking into consideration, you know, the raises and everything. I think in conjunction with, you know, with our finance director, we'd have to figure out, you know, what the, what is we're going to cost and what, what the commission or council wants to do. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so basically, wait a minute. Okay, so basically, what the department heads did was to give a budget in regards to the salary increases, which, which were basically the COLAs, cost of living, okay? Do any of the department heads know that we were going to try to work something out so they could give decent salaries aside from a cost of living?
I have been talking with the public works director about increasing the salary of his workers.
Okay, so does he know? And those, okay, basically, what the question comes down to is, they can't give you a budget change for an increase of salaries if they don't know that we're going to try to do this for them. See what I'm saying? The COLAs don't count.
We don't know what it's going to cost the city. Mr. Clark, you had a comment?
In anticipation of the discussion this evening, we're with the municipal league, they do the Johansson Study of Cities, and I just copied the page out of the 2018 one. And this is for cities with a population of 500 to 2,499, which that's the category we fall in. And this particular page, and it's, it's, it's pretty- And this particular page, and it's, it's, it's pretty, we're right, it has the salary earnings, salary for, salary range for sanitation department laborer. The minimum, according to this, based on 2,080 hours, is 993 per hour. And the medium is 1154, and the maximum is 1385. Then we come down to the street department laborer, and the, the minimum is 941 per hour here, and 1176 for the mid-range, and 1411 for the high range, or the high one. So, for the maximum. But anyway, I just wanted to call that to your attention. They have, we participate in this, and I can't tell you how many cities, but there are a number of cities, and that do participate, and we're getting information together now for the 19 study. This is the 18. Mr. McClan?
Well, I was really directed at the mayor, and that is, and I appreciate this, that we, we want to look at this and do something for those employees, but I think it's something that needs to be done in a workshop, and, and to try and sit down and figure out, okay, that, you know, we need to make some kind of budget projections and things like that, and what we think we can afford to maybe increase them to next year, and look at it for next year's budget, not this year's budget. It's done. And I don't, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time going through and trying to restructure this year. You know, we need to be looking at it for this next year, and a workshop would allow us to do that.
Mr. Meyer?
The 2018 numbers really don't mean much anymore because the minimum wage went to $10 an hour the first of the year, and next year they go to $11 an hour. So, so we've got eight guys that are just barely making over $10 an hour right now. One guy's been there over two years. You know, so, we're not catching up with inflation at all, and I have the new figures that I picked up in Little Rock. They're at home. I brought them with me last time, but I didn't think it was going to actually be discussed very much this time.
I just put this together for the information to people.
Eight, eight guys, $1 an hour, what, $16,000 a year? In an $11 million budget? That isn't much money. Streets has got a lot of money in the bank. Uh, and we can amend the budget anytime. We've done it before.
Ms. Snyder?
Um, we can, I'm not saying we have to get this done immediately, Jerry. I'm not pushing it like that. I think we need to start looking now to get things set up so we can do it as soon as we finally get it figured out, whether it's three months or for next year's budget. Point being, we have a lot of dedicated people. We need to keep them. We need to help them. We have, from going through our budget for the city, where we're actually doing good, we're paying off our debts, we've got money being able to be put aside, we're having a little bit more come in on water. I mean, there are so many ways. We can look at our budget and readjust some things so we can increase the pay. Now, it used to be, and keep in mind, 46 years here, definitely a long timer here. It used to be you could say, you sacrifice working here so you can raise your family in a decent, clean, safe environment. We raised six kids here, well, five of the six here. Not a bad one in the bunch, and believe me, I sacrificed pay for having multiple college degrees, and was a general manager over five shops for 15 years when I retired four years. I was making $9 an hour. They start people at McDonald's more than that on the register. My husband worked for Holiday Island for 41 years at all levels. When he retired after 41 years, he was making $13.62. Now, how many of you would be willing to do that nowadays? Probably zero. The point I'm making is, just because we used to be able to get away with it, doesn't mean we do now. Doesn't mean we should. We need to stay with our people, back our people. We need to take our job here at the council, take the time to dig into stuff, find where we can take money from one place and put it towards our people. They are worth more than anything we have in our budget. Without our people, we don't have a city. Keep that in mind. So, yes, it'll take time, but we need to do it, and we need to work on it regularly. And it's whether it's we as the, as the council do it in workshops, or here, or ask Lonnie to keep us updated every couple of weeks, whatever. We need to make a very honest effort to pay our people properly. And by the way, my boss is one of the best ones in town, so I didn't complain about that lack of money. Okay?
Mr. Thomas?
I just want to clarify. Mr. Meyer, are you suggesting just changing the lowest level of salary, or...
Starting wage.
But suppose you bump them up to $13 an hour, and the other people that are, that were making $13 an hour before...
Just give them next year's minimum wage this year. Bump them a dollar. A dollar an hour is a big, is going to mean a lot for them.
I know that, but I think, I think you have to restructure the entire salary. I, I don't think you can go in and...
Well, there's other, there's other positions in the city that start at more than $10 an hour.
Correct.
So, it's not going to make a big difference, and we're talking about people that are get up to their waist in sewage. There are a lot of people that take that job, so I don't think we have to worry about upsetting the apple cart here.
I'm not sure what...
The wage structure in the rest of the town.
Not the rest of the town, I'm talking about public works. Don't, don't they have people that are making more?
No. We've lost them all.
Everybody at public works makes minimum...
No, we've, we've got people up there too. We do have...
Well, we got, we got the guy in the, a couple guys in the office, right, truck driver.
We've got several that make more than that. I'm not disagreeing with what you are saying. I think, I don't think it's something we need, we can do immediately. I think something, this is something we need to look at, because it's not only just raising an hourly rate, but it also affects your FICA, your withholdings, your, everything else. And, you know, those, those $10 an hour people are also getting 100% insurance paid. Not many employees in Arkansas, and I'm sure Ms. Snyder's employer didn't pay 100%...
They qualify for medicaid at $20, $10.
So, we're paying a lot of benefits into there. Mr. McClan?
Again, I, I, I recommend a workshop, and so I make a motion that we...
I'll second that.
Set up a workshop to discuss wages for public works, and, and, you know, overview for all the departments as far as that goes, but...
Review them all.
Well, I mean, we can look at them.
Oh, we got a motion and a second to set up a workshop to discuss budget and wages for public works on that. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, that brings us up to our next item, discussion of council committees. Mr. Meyer and Ms. Snyder?
Oh, make a motion to discuss.
I'll second that.
And we'll let him open.
All right, well, that was one of the subjects, was maybe have a committee for this, for the wages, public works, and maybe planning, you know? We've, we've got a lot of people that are off, that, that aren't hooked to sewer, and some that could be, and, you know, let's look at that, talk to the public works, and look that over, and see what it's going to cost us in the future.
We're in the process of trying to do that, Mr. Meyer. I mean, that is not, that's our long-term goal with our infrastructure money, is increasing the sewer and water. So, if your, if your motion was looking at the budget committee...
No.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, basically, what this one was about was sitting down and discussing how the committees should be running in regards to their protocol, and how many years a chair would sit, and those kinds of things.
That's commissions, not committees.
Oh, well, maybe we, maybe we used the wrong word. I thought that's what we were supposed to be talking about. We might have used the wrong word.
This is committees.
Yeah, well, we might have used the wrong word, but we said it. Because I know that's what we had talked about, we need to sit there and fork something out for them. Get something, you know...
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, you're...
Mr. McClan?
If, if I read this, a discussion of council committees, that somebody was wanting to set up committees with council members.
Yeah. And I thought it was supposed to be commission.
Oh, boy.
I think I used the wrong word, or Harry did.
No, I did. Mr. Meyer, I think we're satisfied, I think, with what you're talking about. Yeah, okay. Can we go along?
Yeah.
All right, you got a motion to...
It was no motion.
Our next ordinance, our next item of business is an ordinance to vacate the alley east of Angle Street. A motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
All right. This is our, we had the public hearing earlier on this, with no one was here to discuss, so, Mr. McClan?
I'd like to assign this ordinance a number and read it on its first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2294. An ordinance vacating an alley between block three and block nine, and east of Angle Street in the magnetic bay survey, where the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowner to vacate the area defined by the following legal description. All of the alley lying between lot six, block three, and lot one, block nine, formerly known as block seven, of the bay survey of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the northeast corner of said lot six, block three, for the point of beginning, thence south, 89 degrees, 0 minutes, 16 seconds west, for 84.51 feet, to the northwest corner of said lot six, thence north, 7 degrees, 47 minutes, 0 seconds west, for 10.07 feet, to the southwest corner of said lot one, block nine, thence north, 89 degrees, 0 minutes and 16 seconds east, 84.91 feet, to the southeast corner of said lot one, thence south, 5 degrees, 30 minutes, 24 seconds east, for 10.03 feet, to the point of beginning containing .019 acres more or less. And whereas section 1454, 1042 of the Arkansas Code annotated, allows the city council to vacate certain streets. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section 1, the section described above is hereby vacated and titled as hereby vested in peace simple to the adjoining landowner. Section 2, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 3, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter, shall remain in effect.
Mr. McClan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2294 on its first reading.
I second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, nothing else on that? All right. That brings us to our next item of business, which is a resolution for continuation of a street tax. If I can get a motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
This is a resolution that, that came from the governor of the state of Arkansas, asking us for a resolution to support a House joint resolution for continuing the 1/2% sales and use tax for the state highways and bridges, not only city streets, but counties and state. The existing, we already have the existing 1/2% sales tax that's funding most of our infrastructure along the state, and this House joint resolution is basically continuing that levy, and what they're asking for us is just a resolution and support. It's no cost outside of what we're continuing on, that the, the state will do. So, if I can get a motion to assign this a number...
I'll make a motion to assign this resolution a number and read it into passage.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Mr. Thomas?
Where all does this go if it, after it passes?
Beg your pardon?
Where all does it go after it passes?
Where does this resolution go? It goes straight to the governor.
Just that one, one copy to the governor?
Yeah, yeah. Any further? All, Mr. We need a...
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yeah.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
6-0. Resolution number will be 7, 7-2. Resolution by the city of Eureka Springs, supporting the House Joint Resolution 1018 of 2019, also known as HJR 2018 of 2019, proposing an amendment to the Arkansas Constitution to continue a levy of 1/2% sales and use tax for state highways and bridges, county roads, bridges, and other surface transportation, and city streets, bridges, and other surface transportation, after the retirement of the bonds authorized in Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91, a special revenue to be distributed under the Arkansas Highway Revenue Distribution Law. Whereas Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91 levies a 1/2% sales and use tax to provide additional funding for the state's four-lane highway system, county roads, and city streets, and whereas the 1/2% sales and use tax under Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91 is due to expire on June 30, 2023, unless a new constitutional amendment is passed, and whereas under House Joint Resolution 1018, proposes that the sales and use tax levied under Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91 be continued to provide special revenue for use in maintaining, repairing, and improving the systems, state's system of highways, county roads, and city streets, and whereas without continuation of the sales and use tax, the state will be unable to meet the severe and pressing needs to maintain and improve the state's system of state highways, county roads, and city streets, and whereas the constitution of the 1/2% sales and use tax, the continuation of the 1/2% sales and use tax will ensure future investments in the state highway system, county roads, and city streets, and whereas this investment will create jobs, aid in economic development, improve quality of life, and provide additional transportation infrastructure, including specifically, a four-lane highway construction plan designed to connect all regions of the state, and whereas it is beneficial for all municipalities to support HJR 1018 as a necessary funding mechanism for our travel infrastructure, and will serve as an economic boon for the state. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, that we do hereby support the legal proposals found in HJR 1018 of 2019, as well as its adoption by the people of Arkansas. by the people of Arkansas at the next general election.
Mr. Thomas, I misspoke when you said, "Would this be sent, not only be sent to the governor, but also to the municipal league."
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, that takes care of that. Now we're on to the...
Good question. If this doesn't expire until 2023, why are they giving this to us now?
The general election.
Yeah, what?
That's when, that's when the general election. They want the resolution now.
The resolution, if I may...
Sure.
Please.
...supports a constitutional amendment. In order for it to be adopted as a constitutional amendment, they need this much leadway.
Okay, so in other words, so this November, they have to have this prepared for November?
Yes.
Even those three more years for it?
Even though it'll, it'll go on this year's general election ballot, hopefully, if they're calculating their lead time right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the fourth quarter 2019 financial report. I'm clerk. You get a motion to discuss. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Okay, for the fourth quarter for 2019, the reports required by state law, the receipts for all of 2019, the check register, payroll, the bank balances, you saw it at the last budget review, and the long-term liabilities. And our duty has been met.
All right.
Very good.
All right. That brings us to our final item. Get a motion to discuss a park workshop.
So moved.
Good second.
Second.
And Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, Mr., when I added this to the agenda, I think I just said parks. I'm not feeling real well tonight, so I hope you'll be a little more lenient with me. I actually had two items to discuss under parks. I don't, was the agenda either just the workshop, or was it parks?
Pardon?
Format.
Okay. That was my mistake. Would you allow me to discuss the second little item?
Depends. What is it? So it depends. What is it?
That's the council, yeah.
We have to know what it is.
Oh, about how the process for annexing this land works. We need to, I wanted to get some information from the mayor on that.
That's to say, you want to know about annexing?
Correct.
Period.
And, well, I heard, you know, it starts with, it doesn't start with planning. Somebody's got to send it to planning. How does it work?
That's the process there. Mr. Weaver, legally counsel, there's two ways to do an annexing land.
Actually, there's three ways, depending on the situation of the particular piece of land. This particular section, as I understand it, that you're talking about, is adjoining property, so it would probably have to go through, the mayor's office, beginning the action to do it, it actually has to go through, I believe, the quorum court. We'll have to make a decision before we can annex it into the city. I need to look at the procedure, but it's been a while since we brought one in that was adjoining on the same type of situation. But with it being city-owned land, the city would make the, would make the first step, so it comes through the mayor's office as the first step.
Then, this is just a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Who would decide how much of that land should be annexed for the, for the park? And, I mean, are you, are you, would the intention be to annex and add the whole four, four deeded plots to the park, or are you going to cut it up? Do you have any idea how that's going to work?
I think the way that it was given to us was it was supposed to go to parks for parks' use. If it doesn't use for parks, then it reverts back to the owner.
Right.
I'd have to check and see that qualification on that.
So it'd just be taking that whole thing and putting it into Lake Leatherwood Park?
Correct.
Annexation would not do that, though.
Right.
Annexation simply moves it inside the city's corporate limits.
Right.
Mr. McClellan?
And I think that's all it really needs to be. I mean, if it's in the city limits, we can designate anything we want as a park. I mean, we've got streets that we designate as parks, and in other lands, the parks takes care of. So, I mean, as far as that goes, I think that's irrelevant. But, you know, it's, it's, we, we own it. It's, why do we have to take it to anybody? I mean, don't we bond, do voluntary annexations, and do those as long as the property that they're wanting to have annexed is, is all adjacent to the city? And, and we've done that before.
I don't, but I think it has to go before, to the quorum court, because they're relinquishing that land from their tax books. And we'll put it...
Well, I mean, that, that would be just a formality, I would assume.
Of course, there's no tax on it.
They're not, they're not going to stop anyway. Yeah, it's ours anyway. It's, so, and we're not trying to annex anybody else's land other than our own's.
And, going back to a possible misconception, it doesn't prevent us from doing anything, whether we've annexed it or not. It doesn't have to be in our city limits for us to have it as part of our parks. That's came from the municipal league when we took this in. That's the reason why I haven't done anything to annex it. There hadn't been any really valid reason to annex it, one way or the other. I mean, we can do it, but it's just, you know, costs more money.
So then, is there any reason not to declare it to be a part of Lake Leatherwood Park?
We more or less already did that when we took the land in.
What do you mean, more or less?
I'd have to go back and look at, look at the legal discretion, but I think it was given to us on basis that it would be used for parks.
Yeah, isn't that what the deed says?
I think so.
I think it does, too.
And if we don't, it goes back to the owner.
Right. So it, it is now a part of Lake Leatherwood Park?
Yes.
Then it, then parks could immediately start to revise their master plan?
Yes.
Speaking to that?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
There's a huge difference in it being tied into Lake Leatherwood Parks or Eureka Springs City Parks. And you'd better get it clear and keep it as Eureka Springs City Parks. Technically, Eureka does not own Lake Leatherwood Park. We have it for, we own it for as long as we want it. If and when we choose to not utilize it, it automatically reverts back to a national park.
No, it actually reverts back to the US government.
Yeah.
It don't revert back to the park.
Federal government, which is a national park.
She's correct.
We technically do not own Lake Leatherwood.
But anyway. But I think we're confusing the issue, Mr. Thomas. Well, if you want to talk about annexation, we can get into that later.
If you say it can be part of the park without annexing, that's fine with me. Yeah. But I would like, Mr. Weaver, then, to look at how you can, you make it a park of Lake Leatherwood Park or not. Because the problem is, parks are spending money on, on trails which are not in Lake Leatherwood Park.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr.?
Parks spends money on trails all over town.
They're city, that's city parks.
Trails are city parks.
Yeah.
According to, and I, and I know I've sent you this, too, Mr. Thomas, according to municipal league, we're not in violation of spending money on that piece of property for parks.
According, I have not seen anything from municipal league that, that made any sense. And I, I passed it on.
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah.
Well, I've seen what the municipal league has said, and I agree with what the municipal league said. I can put that into a written formal document if you want, but basically, as I understand what the municipal league's rationale is, is that we took it in as part of the park system, which we did when we accepted the deeds for the four separate pieces of property. And we accepted them on the same basis as we had accepted Leatherwood, except Leatherwood, the original owner, was not a private landowner or a private corporation. It was the federal government. If we stop using any of the part out there as parks, it goes back to the original landowner. So we would lose, if we stop using Leatherwood as a park, it would go back to the federal government. These gravity trails are part of that, as the city has recognized, connecting it into that and making it a portion of the park there. And the original master plan that goes back for several years from adoption is for the development of trails, partially, in that park. That is a part of that park at this point. If you stop using part of it, you're probably going to stop using the whole park. The only reason to stop using the park would be if it become unusable for some reason.
Okay, so if you accept a piece of land that's next to a park, and it has to be a park, it automatically becomes a part of the other park?
If you look at the documents that brought it in, those original four deeds, they equate that it is going to be part of that park.
Part of Lake Leatherwood Park.
Yeah, part of that structure. And therefore, I think it anticipates, as the municipal league has basically said, the way I read their language, that we took it in. When we took in those 30-odd acres from those four deeds, that we knew what we were doing, that we were establishing an additional area of park.
You must have seen something from them then that I didn't, because I didn't see anything. I saw that string of emails that I forwarded you was all I saw. Okay. Well, then the question goes back then to, if, if the tax is limited to what is in the Lake Leatherwood master plan?
The Lake Leatherwood master plan clearly talks about trails. It may not talk about these specific gravity trails, but it again is a master plan. A master plan does not go to detail of, we're going to build a six-foot by five-foot sandbox. It says, we're going to go sandboxes.
Oh, my master plan would say six foot by five foot.
Well...
Yeah, you know, it's CD.
The idea of a master plan, as I understand it, is the concept of we're going to lay out the grand scheme of things, and then we're going to work out the details. And a particular trail improvement would not go in the master plan if it is simply a detail. The creation of trails in general is part of a master plan. Then we go down A, 2, 3, C, and we get to, we're going to go this trail at this point.
Right.
So that's not really part of the original master plan, other than the master plan says we're going to build trails. We're going to maintain trails. We're going to do whatever is necessary to have trails for various uses in the city. And so the actual master plan does cover the idea of creating trails within Lake Leatherwood.
And the map that's in the master plan would be of no...
It, it's a concept. Master plans, we've gotten this argument several years ago about the city planning documents. And we actually, we were in court at the time, arguing, well, when you've got a master plan, a plan for the city, can you vary from that? Well, you do vary from it. This is just the big concept of where you start, is the master plan. And then you break it off into the little parts as you complete the different sections of trying to work toward the main goal, which is the master plan. So, we got in the debate before in court about whether we were following the city's planning documents. And the court approved that we were at that time. And I think they would approve the same thing with the master plan for Lake Leatherwood, in that it is a concept that's going to have to be fully developed as it matures and as it ages. And maybe it's time to do another master plan. Most plans of this nature get redone every so many years, because goals change. But the master plan is basically a goal list.
Ms. Harmon?
Can I just make a request? If we're talking about setting up our workshop, just that we would have the, a copy of the master plan, the annexed land, the ordinance, and also the info on the tax there at the meeting, so that we all have it in front of us? Because I think we could probably talk about this for quite some time, but it seems to be more fitting for the, for the workshop. I mean, now that we kind of have set the basics.
Right. Evidently, there, the municipal league has been sending out some stuff that I have not received, because what I received from them didn't, didn't jive.
You have everything that I've sent, and you sent, and you sent it to Mr. Weaver.
Right.
Mr. Weaver's referring, I think, to your emails?
To the conglomerate of what I got from both.
Yeah. I didn't see anything in there about the original deed that we, where we took possession of it at all.
That wasn't in any of the emails.
Right. I thought that's what you were saying, made it a part, part of the parks, that original deed.
What I said was the original deed. There said that if it's not used for parks, and I can't quote it, then it reverts back to the owners.
Right. Okay.
Municipal league didn't say anything about that.
I know. That's, they didn't say anything.
That's what their deed said. We're getting off tangent here, Mr. Thomas. If you want to, I think what Ms. Harmon was saying, bring this up at a workshop.
Right.
Now, you had some items I think you wanted to distribute, or do you want to hold off on those?
I think I want to, as far as, I would like to defer my input on the workshop. If somebody else feels that it would need to go ahead and hold it right away, that would be fine.
Ms. Harmon?
I guess my question is, is, is providing us with the additional information going to happen?
Yes. Oh, I can do that. Yeah, that's no problem. Yeah. I mean, it's public record.
No, I know, but I'm assuming, so we all have it in our, when we have that workshop.
So, you don't want to have a workshop now? Is that what I just heard? I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
Yeah, you did. You missed the fact that I said I don't feel ill.
No, I didn't miss that. I did, and I, my condolences.
I'm trying, I'm trying to process here, Jerry. I apologize. Yeah. I, I feel, on my part, I need to step back and review some more information that evidently I didn't read that came from the municipal league. So, at this point, I wouldn't be ready to structure a workshop.
Well, we'll say that next, after next meeting.
Is that a motion?
Ms. Harmon?
I mean, again, if we're considering a workshop, I'd like to get up to speed on all of the information. If this is a part of, I mean, it, I've heard different things out there, and I've heard information about the tax, how it's supposed to be allocated, the master plan, the land that's been annexed. So those seem to be the key components of where we've got some questions. And I'm not saying there's issues or anything like that, but there are some questions in regards to those particular items. What I would like, and I don't have an issue as far as when the workshop happens. I think a workshop needs to happen. It's just, I would like to have that information in front of me, so I can look at it, and I can review it, and I can form a, you know, an idea of what I'm going to ask, or questions that I may ask in that workshop. So...
Mr. Thomas, I'm going to take the liberty. You can go ahead and pass it out, what you gave us.
Oh, well, I was, I was just going to say, if there's going to be a workshop, I'm going to go ahead and pass it out.
Well, please do, because this, there is, there will be a workshop.
Yeah, and this is, I, I think...
I mean, this is...
I think instead of just having a workshop, if you're going to have a workshop, you need to set the format so that it is productive for everybody. And I think this would be a productive format. All right. A couple of things in here. Basically, this is, if you've been following this discussion for the last six weeks or so, there's been a lot of back and forth, bickering, and arguing, and going on. And I'm trying to eliminate all the fluff, and get, you know, get us down to what's the basic facts. And also, you'll notice that... And also, you'll notice that this workshop does not have an opportunity for public input. It's a dialogue between council and parks. The public, I've been inundated with information, and as I'm sure everybody at the table has, from different people in the community and their viewpoints. So I think, you know, they're going to have ample opportunity to contact individual council people, and there's no reason to have people coming up to the microphone to get us off task, to continue berating somebody else, you know, that kind of thing. I think this should be more of a dialogue just between the two bodies.
All right, any other comments?
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this format for the workshop.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion, a second? Ms. McClung?
Okay, this refers to parks, the financing, activities, and record keeping, but it doesn't make, it doesn't refer to anything else. It doesn't refer to the land or...
Well, if you want to add that on, it's a topic.
Instead of number five there, deed.
Well, it would need to go under the topic.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as far as...
Changing the topic.
So...
So you could amend the, you could amend the topic line sentence.
I don't have a problem with the way things are. Do you want to amend it? I don't.
Oh, I thought if we're, I'm confused, Jerry.
That's okay.
If we're going to have a workshop, you want to discuss land.
Yes.
If you want to, then you want to amend it.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I'm not making the amendment.
Okay.
I'm thoroughly lost. What about master plan and all that?
Yeah. That could, that would be, this is intending to have you focus on your questions, what your concerns are, and giving parks the opportunity to focus on their responses so that we, you know, so that we're down to the nitty-gritty, the facts are on the table, and then you can have additional dialogue.
So it could include master plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'm not sure why we even, kind of going back to Terry's point, I'm not sure why we even need to specify the topic. It's a workshop. You've said in number one, prepare for the workshop. Each council member is invited to submit no more than five specific questions related to parks. In this case, you say parks, financial activities, and record keeping. Why can't we just submit five questions to parks? And whether or not it has to do with the land, has to do with the tax? I mean, it's a workshop, right? Does it have to be? I just don't feel like it should have to be specific if we've got some concerns. The whole reason for having a workshop is to be, is to be able to openly ask questions, not kept to a specific topic. And if the topics are the tax, the land, the finances, and whatever else, then isn't that what our workshop is for? And we can ask those questions. And I'm not putting down on how you did it. I'm just saying, in general, I thought that's what the workshop was for.
Well, and that's, you know, this is my suggestion.
Right.
A workshop is actually, the definition is, an informal meeting with a focused topic. If you want your focused topic to be parks, then you could have...
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I thought it, that's what I thought it was.
This is not a very informal meeting.
No. So...
It's pretty structured, Bob.
Well, you know, I build six by five chicken houses or whatever it was.
Yeah.
I like to get in there and get things done. I don't want to listen to all the hullabaloo that's been connected with these issues.
Well, I think what we're trying and what the comments is, I think what, we don't want to get into the whole parks deal, talking about dog parks or Grotto Spring or something. You want specific, it seems like what the problem is at Lake Leatherwood.
Correct. Right.
So, you know, if we want to talk about Lake Leatherwood and the tax money, then, I mean, that's part of the financial activities, in my opinion, so...
There's a motion.
Anybody else? All right, we got a motion to use this as a...
To adopt this format.
Adopt the format. Any further discussion? All in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. I'm neutral.
Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Okay, we need a roll call. It's too fragmented.
I think it's three-three.
No, we have a neutral.
I'm a neutral.
That's a no. It's abstaining, right?
Ultimately, it is, but I think it's important to count the votes as they are.
All right, take a roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
I don't care.
Are you abstaining?
I'll abstain.
Mr. McClung?
No. No.
Ms. Harmon?
No.
So we have two, three, one. Motion fails.
Does that, I'm sorry. Does the failure of this particular motion end discussion of workshop?
I don't know.
No.
Okay, then...
Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas?
Well, then I would say, if we're going to have a workshop, what's it about?
Parks.
Parks.
All aspects of Leatherwood Park. How about that? Ms. Green?
I'll make a motion that we have a workshop discussing the land, the master plan, Lake Leatherwood, and the tax and the deeds.
Related to parks.
Related to parks.
What was your last one, related to parks?
The deeds.
The deeds. All right.
I'll second that.
Mr. Thomas?
Will there be public input at the meeting, at the workshop?
It was your motion.
Okay, I, for the sake of...
If it's a workshop.
If Bob, Bob went to a lot of work, I'll say there won't be any public comments. They can, at this one, at this one.
Is the second in support of the...
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
I think it's important that this is a joint workshop with parks.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we didn't, that wasn't stated, but that's the way it needs to be, of course.
That was my intention.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, Ms. Harmon?
If we can state it the way that Alyssa just said, as far as the items that we're discussing, I don't really have a problem with how he set up, if you want to use that...
I have five.
Yeah, if you want to use that guideline. It just makes it easier, but...
It would make it easier.
Okay. So do I need to make a motion to follow his format, or do we not need to?
Amend it, amend the motion to use the...
I'll amend the motion to...
Use the preparation for the workshop?
To use the preparation for the workshop.
I'll second that.
Bob's preparation.
Okay. All right, discussion?
Who is the second, please?
I was.
Thank you.
Ms. Harmon? All in favor of the amendment, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any further discussion on the motion?
So don't you need to vote on the original motion?
I asked if there's any further discussion on the motion. So if there's not, I'm going to call for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
We already voted on it.
No, the motion.
We already voted on it.
Yeah, we voted on the amendment.
We voted on it before the amendment.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. That takes care of another silly council meeting. Let's see. Does it take, I think that concludes our agenda, doesn't it?
I believe so.
I can't find my agenda now.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Mr. Thomas, it's our cheering this time.
Oh, are we going to do...
No, we didn't do what agenda said.
Agenda, I'm sorry. Agenda meeting, yeah. I didn't, can't find it, so you're right. Ms. Harmon?
I just...
Thank you.
I just have one thing that's been kind of, as we're going through, as we went through the budget, as we went through increasing rates, taxes, things like that, I just personally feel like, I know the city's in a better place than it was a few years ago, and I do appreciate that, that all of the departments have worked to really, to get the budget under control. But I think going forward, what I would like to see is that we set some sort of guidelines as far as what we're trying to achieve. So what are we trying to have in our reserves? What do we think is a minimum that we should have in reserves?
Do you have an agenda item?
Well, that's from, how would I, how would I...
Reserves.
Is it just the reserves, just a minimum?
And that's a hard one to do.
I know.
Because it's budgets.
I understand.
In fact, I don't even, you know, why don't you, why don't you think about that and talk to Mr. Clark, and we'll see if you really, I don't know if that's an agenda item.
Can it be a discussion?
Well, you know, you discuss it. Yeah, all right. Discussion of the reserves. Future reserves.
I'll second that.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Meyer?
I think I've found, between my daughter and an accountant friend of mine, I think we can put together the five-year comparison that Bob was asking about.
Excellent.
If I can get the ledger detail, I think we can get it done. And that will help with what you're talking about.
Is that an agenda item?
No. Yeah, I think you should make a comment. That wasn't an agenda item, that was just a comment, Mr. Meyer. Yeah, I guess so. Okay.
Anybody else? Actually, I think I started with you first the last time.
Oh, that's, I'm ready to go.
I'm ready to go, Mr. Thomas.
I just want to show my format and tell the people that other than the topic of at the top, my format was accepted. You guys like my chicken house? I'm glad to be here.
I can't outdo him. I'm done.
Ms. Snyder?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Harmon?
Yeah, nothing.
Mr. Meyer?
Nope.
Mr. McClung?
Bob is ready to go home. I concur.
I'll do this real quick. As already noted and commented, and Mr. Hank, he's already gone, but this is the Mighty Grove Month. So February 14th at 5:30 to 10 o'clock, Coronation Ball, End of the Ozarks. February 15th to 10 o'clock to 3:00 p.m., is the 16th Annual Chocolate Festival at the Community Center.
At what time? 10 to what?
10 to 3:00. And you better get there early if you really want to buy any chocolate, because they sell out quickly. They don't make enough chocolate. February 15th, that night, is the Eureka Grove Night Parade, coming down Spring Street, starting at 6:00 p.m. Also, on the 15th, right after the parade, is the 7th Annual Black Light Ball, Chelsea's Corner. And on the 23rd, at 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., is the Beer Can and Brewery Anna Show at the End of the Ozarks. And that's all I have. It's a motion to...
I'm going to, Terry. I'm showing you.